Everyone's in.
Okay. We'll get started here. I've got the Zoom recording is now going, so we're live on Zoom. And start the recording. All right, so we are recording to the Zoom cloud and we're also live on YouTube now. And go ahead and all the special media, the Region Nine Board of Education, July 8, 7:00 PM to order at 7:06 PM. We're no longer under Executive Order 7B now, so we're calling to order. And we have all board members present except for Lynn and Karen and Dr. Harrison, Dr. Pearson, and Will from the administration and several members of the public. All right, so our first item of business is discussion possible action. First item is the appointment of board members to the Joint Board Personnel Search Committee, Steering Committee for the Superintendent. So this is more of a procedural item because at the joint board meeting the other day, we decided all boards would have three members appointed for the Steering Committee for the Personnel Search Committee for the Superintendent. And so I've got three people I'd like to appoint from Region Nine to that joint Steering Committee. We, Mike D'Agostino, Maureen Williams, and Cheryl Graziano. So those will be our three members from Region Nine onto the Steering Committee under the Joint Board Personnel Search Committee for the Superintendent. All right. Then are, so any, any other questions or comments on that? And nothing else but just an appointment for that one for the moment. They'll be contacted and given a schedule of upcoming meetings. All right, so the next item then is the search consultant RFP for the Personnel Search for the Joel Barlow High School Head of School. So the last time we met as the search PSC, the Personnel Search Committee, had a couple of action items of reposting job description and RFP. So, Dr. Harrison, I believe you have those items, so if you would like to give the group an update.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So one of the things that we wanted, that we discussed at the last meeting was posting for the head of school position on our site. And so that position is posted and applicants are now able to submit their applications electronically. And we can review them in our, in frontline or AppleTrack like we would any other typical position. We obviously had been working with the search consultant from CES and until we reached out to him and are using a similar job, job posting for our site that, that they used during the initial search process. And we just wanted to make sure that we were, that, that we were just notifying him that, that we were going to use that same language for the posting, for the posting. So that position is posted and it is listed as post, open until filled. We did post the RFP that's also posted on our site. And in that last meeting when we talked about posting an RFP, just like the first time, we discussed reaching out to, to local search consultants. There was one that we reached out to directly. But as far as any submissions or proposals submitted, we did not have any, any submissions of, of any search firms wanting to take that, take that off.
Right, so, so at this time, we have no responses to the second RFP, the continuation for the search process of that of school. Mike, I saw your end, if you have a question.
Yeah, so when did we post that?
So that was scheduled to be posted on, on Friday. Our former Director of Finance and Operations typically posts those. I had Vicki post, Vicki posted it. Actually, Vicki either posted it on Friday or over the weekend. But, but I did reach out to, we did reach out directly to, to the consultant that we've used before, to Dr. Arardi directly. So even though that posting, the RFP was posted late, we did make him aware of redoing that, that we were going to be reopening the search and that the board was interested in, in having him submit a proposal. So he, he is aware of that and.
So just for the members of the public and for clarity, the position, the RFP was not posted until at the earliest sometime during the holiday weekend. And so it's been, only been really a few days for responses and that we have reached out to firms we've used in the past and we're hopeful that we will receive submissions moving forward. That accurate.
That, that is correct. But, but I'd like for us, for us also to have a contingency if, if we don't receive that proposal so that we have a plan going forward to, and that we're prepared to do the, the search and hiring process internally versus using a search firm.
So in a worst case scenario, if we don't receive submissions from a firm that we're enthusiastic about, it's your impression that we have the ability to hire using internal resources?
That's correct.
Yeah, so what I, I would think, as a part of the reason for having this special meeting this evening is if we needed to approve authorization for a search consultant and spending on that, which at this point, you know, we're, we're not there yet. So potentially, I think what this may cause is us to have another Personnel Search Committee meeting maybe next week and talk through, you know, alternatives if we don't get a response back to the RFP in a timely manner so we can keep moving forward as quickly as we can for the replacement of the head of school.
Would the board, maybe this is perhaps an opportunity to make a motion, but would the board members be open to providing the superintendent provisional authority in the event we do not get any response, that there are other alternatives, or provide the pre-authorization to spend up to a certain amount to engage a search consultant, so we don't have to have a special meeting? It's more a question to the board members, but.
Does anyone comment?
I would favor waiting to see whether we have any response, you know. I mean, the, the one joy of the amended Section 149 of Public Act 21-2 gives us the capability, the ability to hold these lovely Zoom meetings. So, you know, I, I think, well, you know, seems like I attend to a night. I'm, I'm happy to attend a couple more, if, you know, as many as we need to, to resolve this and hire the right firm, but. I think if we made a motion, we still probably good form would be that we would approve and hire a certain firm rather than just approve a dollar number. We, we kind of really need to approve that firm in public as best form, I think.
Yeah, I would tend to want to go that direction as well to name a firm a dollar amount.
Yep, I mean, my concern is that, 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 that's gonna, but it sounds like it's not since we publicly reached, we publicly posted the position, so that provides us the flexibility.
Yeah, the position is posted, right, and the RFP is posted, but it's only been a couple of days.
As long as that wouldn't preclude the, the moving forward if we do receive viable candidates in conjunction with responses to the RFP, I just don't want.
No, so if we got candidates coming in and responding, we, we have the Personnel Search Committee, we could, we could start interviewing the people.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so it sounds like then I will look to get another meeting of the Personnel Search Committee where the head of school scheduled for some time mid next week or later next week to give a few more days for the RFP process and applications. And again, all the board, for the members of the public, all the board members are members of the Personnel Search Committee. So we would convene a, a non-meeting to talk through next steps and review any RFP responses.
And just to clarify for members of the public, I believe since the Personnel Search Committee is still constituted, that the process would be the same in terms of, i.e., once we receive candidates, however, we receive those candidate resumes that we would have the same representation or process with respect to interviewing those candidates? Or do we have an intent to change the process? Meaning who would be interviewing first round, et cetera? Again, just, just in full transparency, I did receive a question from the member of the public with respect to who would be, if that process would be the same.
I'm not sure I'm following your question, would it be having members of the public in the first round? I mean, we would still screen candidates.
We had, we had PT, PTSA representation on the, on the initial interviews as well as members from the faculty part of that process. So that's the question that was posed to me, would, would those individuals still be, specifically the PTSA, would they still be involved in that process to have that parent representation?
Yeah, I think we could look to do that. I mean, it's always going to be the challenge with schedules, but I don't think we need to deviate too much from process, but we can, we can talk about that in our PSC meeting. Because again, we want to try to move things along as quickly as we can, right? I mean, we've already done community surveys and have that information, so. Just to, to get the interviewing process moving as quick as we can over the summer. So we can talk about that in more detail, how many rounds we want to do. Yeah, for this next pass. Okay, any other questions or comments? So I will take the action item to schedule the next PSC for the head of school. All right. That, a few people reading room and noting Ken has joined at 17:18. Okay, so then our next item on discussion possible action is Item C, update on the Barlow Gymnasium Cafeteria HVAC and Safety Improvement Project. So, Mike, do you like to give an update from the building project, building committee?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the project is still on track, still on course for completion prior to the start of school opening. We did, as everyone is experiencing, there's a shortage of metals, coppers, aluminums that most of the manufacturers are experiencing nationwide and it's hitting the major manufacturers as well. And our equipment is coming from Train, which is again, one of, one of the major suppliers of HVAC equipment in the country. We did get delayed, we were supposed to be accepting delivery that first week of July. They had promised us end of June, first week of July. We have been bumped to July 15th ship date. But through discussions with the contractors and with Train, I've spoken to them several times, there, there remains a great deal of confidence that the equipment will arrive shortly after the 15th, once it's shipped, you know. And the contractor remains confident that everything will still be completed on time. The, the contractors has, have been in and measured all the ductwork. It's all being fabricated offsite so that it can all can be brought in and assembled onsite. Same is happening with the piping for the chillers. The contractor, the piping contractor has measured everything. Everything's being fabricated offsite so that they have everything, you know, pre-made. Again, that will help us to, you know, speed up the installation rather than them fabricating stuff onsite. Everything should be, the majority of the items should be pre-made, so it will help speed up that installation. Other than that, the, the Bleach, the Erwin seating has given us a ship date of August 5th, no, actually a delivery date of August 15th for the new bleachers and the bleacher modifications. And again, that still gives us plenty of time. They're probably a week install, week and a half install. So we should still, again, have plenty of time. So everything is, is tracking, everything is progressing, everything has been filed. And again, I, I still remain very confident that everything will be done in advance of the start of school. So if you've gone by, there's lots of people walking around, lots of things going on, but there's no equipment yet, you know. So it, but it'll be Fast and Furious, starting probably in a week or so. Everything will be, you know, going. We have Mr. Santangeli has provided us with a, a rendering of the gym floor and how they want it painted and, you know, logos, all that is, is all been figured out, everything's been submitted. So everything is, is on track, everything is moving along. We're just, again, waiting on equipment because obviously we're not going to do the gym floor until we do the ductwork and the units above, so, but everything is good.
Do we have all the, for the bleachers and everything for the gymnasium? I'm assuming like paint and stuff like that's not a problem, but any of the bleachers or any of those? Any issues on supplies on that stuff?
No, no, Erwin, like I said, Erwin has given us a delivery date of August 15th. So that was important that we got into the queue. They're, they're not, the, the bleachers are mainly composite and then they're, they're plastic seats and then there is some, you know, steel work in the back of the new ones, but they're not experiencing the shortage of supplies that, you know, an HVAC company is, is experiencing. So I've spoken to them several times and they're still confident in that August 15th delivery date. So we should be okay with that.
Any, and board members, any other questions?
Is it fair, and again, probably my ignorance with respect to building, but is it fair to say that just the conditions of the building are kind of just status quo pending delivery of the equipment? Or, and then it doesn't sound like there's really, it's just really prep? If I could simplify what's happening right now?
Yes, right now, everything is functioning the way it had been prior to, you know, school ending. So, so we haven't really done or changed anything. And, and yes, there's lots of people walking around, measuring, figuring, but there have been no physical changes to anything pending the arrival of a new appointment.
Okay. All right, any other questions from board members?
Um, and Mike, you know this because you've been over there supervising often, I assume, because I know I've seen your van there.
Yes. I try to go, whenever there's someone there, I, I try to go stop by and make sure, you know, everything is on track, so. I get preferred parking there. No other cars, so.
It's easy in the summer, right?
A little easier in the summer, right?
Yeah.
So, so I guess, I just thought of one other question, I guess with respect, it sounds like the compression of work is going to happen in, in August, which is great because at least there's not a lot of downtime that, you know, in terms of the building usage, I know it's limited during the summer, but in terms of the staff that will be using the building or whoever's going to be using the building in August, are there certain sections that are going to be blocked off? Or how does that work or how does that coordinate?
Yeah, so I, I spoke with the assistant principals and we developed a plan where, you know, all workers, all service, everything will come through the rear of the building. That way, if there's any, you know, staff, we do run extended school day and, you know, for students and we also, you know, have staff in the building. So there, there shouldn't be that overlap of staff with, you know, workers. That part of the building is pretty much isolated, so everyone will come through the back. I also did have a discussion with them about coordination and they seem to be very confident that there are many areas of the building that have standalone units that will still have cooling when the building is, when the chillers are being installed, that supply the other parts of the building, there'll still be areas of the building where there's standalone units that won't be affected by that, that, you know, time that, that the chillers will be down. And again, I have spoken to them several times and, you know, it's just about coordination and trying to, you know, once the equipment gets there, having everything, you know, prefabricated and, and ready to go so that we can reduce, you know, that, that downtime, you know, and try to minimize any kind of effect that it would have on the building, so.
All right. And I'm assuming then later in July, then we'll start having Building Committee meetings and, you know, start having invoices and things like that that will.
Yes, yes, as soon as things start arriving and getting installed, I think Building Committee meetings are a good thing, like we did with Campus Improvement Project, so that everybody's dialed in and everybody knows what's going on as we're getting invoices and, you know. So yes.
Okay.
But again, you know, the joy of the legislature, we can do them virtually if you would like. Don't want to park next to mine at the, at the high school, you can do them on the Zoom, so.
Instruction projects, I like to go and see.
I'd love to have you there.
Parking's not a problem. All right, then we'll move on then to discussion possible action item D. The Region Nine Participation in a Joint Board Personnel Search Committee for the Director of Finance and Operations. And this again is another procedural matter coming out of the last joint board meeting where each of the boards agreed to conduct in their meetings pointing people to work on the search for the Director of Finance and Operations. So we'll need to do a couple of motions here and then I can appoint some people. So I have the motion that the other boards were looking at, I can put up on the screen or we can create our own, but ultimately we would need to have a motion for Region Nine to participate in the Personnel Search Committee for the Director of Finance and Operations and then also the Personnel Search Steering Committee Subcommittee.
Right, so just for clarification, when you say the motion for what was done before, this is the first time because I think.
First time for this one, yes.
Yes, the previous director was not hired through the search.
That's, yes, correct.
And through a Personnel Search Committee, that was a straight hire.
Yes, correct. Yeah, so I can pull up the motion that the other boards, if we would like to use that as the base for our motion to be similar, I can share that out on the screen. And then I would look for somebody to either do one motion with both parts of it or two motions. So just give me a second here. All right, can you see the screen? Can I see the screen? Okay, can we get a little bit bigger? Okay, so this is the motion with the two parts for the Personnel Search Committee and Part One and the Steering Committee in Part Two. I'll give Brian a chance to read it, to look very familiar, we've done a lot of these in the last several months in search committees. So again, I'll look for a board member to make a motion, either this one or something similar so that we can have Region Nine participate in the search process for the Director of Finance and Operations.
I, I move as written.
I'm second as written.
Thank you, that was Maureen for the second.
Mm-hmm. We just really didn't want to read it all into the record.
I can't hide it into the record.
I would like to suggest one revision, which is it says the Steering Committee shall be chaired by one member from Reading and one member from Easton to be selected by the committee. I, I think it should say one member from the town of Reading and one from the town of Easton to eliminate any ambiguity that if, in other words, we're, we're just talking about the chairs would be one would be from town and not.
From the town of Reading. Is that what you're suggesting here, Mike?
Yeah, I, because it could be inferred that it means the board, right?
Yeah.
That, that's all I'm saying is I think it's good to better clarify it if nobody objects.
I can, I can move to amend my motion.
Great, thank you, and Maureen, you're okay with the?
Yes, of course.
For your second, all right, great. All right, any further discussion on the motion? All right, then I will call the question, I'll just look share so I can see everybody. All right, so I'll just, I'll just do roll call for it, Cheryl?
Yes.
Juliette?
Yes, and can you send me that?
I will.
Mike? Yes.
Gwen? Still, okay, Karen?
Yes.
Mary Lee? Maureen?
Yes.
And myself, so it carries seven, seven out. All right, and then while we're on the same topic, I would like to appoint the two board members for Region Nine for the Search Committee being Karen O'Brien and Mary Lee Pumpel. So those will be our two board members from Region Nine on the search for Director of Finance and Operations in the Joint Search Committee. All right, any other questions, discussion on that? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to Item Three, Public Comment. Any members of the public want to comment, please raise your hand or the symbol there, the hand symbol in the Protestment Section, let me introduce yourself, please, name and town and try to limit your comments to two minutes or less and related to our topics on the agenda, if you don't mind. And I see, and Cheryl, if you can help me look, it looks like RJ Alito? Yeah, there we go, there we go, okay, great, all right, go ahead.
Maureen Hanley, Andrews Road, Easton. Actually, I have a few questions. On the, on a prior Board of Ed meeting, it was stated that the search firm that was engaged to hire Dr. Harrison, since it had been, you know, a year and he had not been retained for more than that, that the search firm that had been used could be used again at no further cost to our town. So my first question is that, asking why are we looking at other search firms? Or if there was something wrong with that contractual agreement that now we're talking about using additional taxpayer dollars for the search? Number two question is, you know, as a mother, I, I'm not very supportive of the proposed search committee as it doesn't seem to completely represent our town from a party position. Half of that is just an opinion, but half of it is a question because it does not seem to represent our town from both sides of the aisle. My last question is that Todd had made a reference that there were some results of the survey that were in, in his opening comments. And my last question is, what were the results?
Okay, thank you for that. And we do not do question and answer in the public comment. So if any board member chooses to respond in the board member comment, you can do that. And I'm happy if you want to send me an email or I can reach out to you and talk to you offline to answer your questions. But again, we don't do Q and A here in the public comment section, but good questions. Thank you. All right, any other board member comments? See Dana? Should I not board member of the public comments? Sorry Dana, go ahead.
Oh, hope that's a Freudian slip.
Yeah.
Dana Benson, thirty-four Pond Road, Easton. Dana Benson, Pond Road, Easton. I wanted to, as someone who's going through the process of doing some renovations of my house, I really appreciate what Mike was saying about the metal shortages and the difficulty of getting stuff delivered and want to thank him for being on top of this situation because things can really push off. In terms of the search for new personnel, I think we have in a, in a way with, with the vacancies at Barlow, I believe we just filled Helen Keller over in Easton. Superintendent position is open, director of finance. Seems like a, a kind of an unusual opportunity to to, to put in sort of a new, new approach, a new team, whatever you want to call it. So I would encourage the search committees to please look for people who are really committed or able to administer because this is a very, as, as you've discussed, I don't think we need to change our structure. We might want to consider having the assistant superintendent attend the, you know, the Eastern and Reading what, what board meetings and then report up to the superintendent who perhaps only reports to the ER nine or something like that. But I would hate to see our districts merged into one. And I think we really does, I, I didn't realize just how tough of a job it is to be superintendent. When you've got five schools and three boards. So I think we should really emphasize in our search someone who's, who, who, who has something like that in their background or wants to do that. So thank you very much for everything.
Sorry, I see Phyllis Rhodes?
Phyllis Rhodes, Gallows Hill Road in Reading. Um, so I just wanted to make an observation really. So my, my three children went through the Reading schools and through Barlow, all three of my kids, K through twelve, received an excellent education. And since moving to Reading twenty-five years ago, I've been an active volunteer in the schools and tried to attend board meetings when I can, when my schedule allows. And I've always said that the excellence of our schools, I believe, is the cheapest real estate insurance anybody could ever ask for, to making, to make sure that our schools are supported and, and well-run. And I'm really concerned that, you know, so soon after losing Tom McMoran and Scott Rice, we now find ourselves in a situation where Dr. Harrison is resigning and you know, our director of finance, Mr. Zachary is resigning or is, is leaving. Um, and I'm, I'm, I just, I hope that the board maybe will take a step back and really give some thought to why we're losing such fantastic people, you know, we, we're now, we now find ourselves without a superintendent, without a director of finance and operations and without a head of school. Um, and I think it's, I'm just very, very concerned that we're, uh, we're missing perhaps the big picture. Um, I think we really need to do some soul searching around what makes that job so impossible to do, that, that superintendent job and, and honestly, the administrator jobs. I mean, for one thing, I might suggest that the length of these board meetings, sometimes the number of board meetings that, that administrators are required to attend. These are all things I think we really need to, to, to think about and to do a deep dive on. I don't think it's, it's a laughing matter that these meetings often go till eleven or twelve o'clock at night. When, you know, administrators are expected to be in the office at six thirty in the morning and they may have two or three of these meetings a week. It's, it's not something we would, we would find acceptable for ourselves or our children and we should not find it acceptable for our administrators and our superintendents. So
Thank you.
Answer, but I hope it's something we can, the, the board can really give some, some thought to.
Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone else from the public?
Hi, Ben Oxman, Longwell Road. Thanks for letting me make comments. Hopefully they are productive. I want the board to know I'm, I completely empathize with the burden of their time on their time. I really won't, don't want to be in a meeting this late either. Again, I'm new to town and identify as a socially liberal person. I want to briefly touch upon the narrative being disseminated on the opponents of the DEI because I don't think it's productive. And then I want to present some ideas on the hiring process. We are being told that parents who are upset are just parroting propaganda that equities is, that equity is simply a tool to obtain equality with no clear introspection onto the complexities that we are trying to deny injustices of the past despite being more than willing to engage in productive discussions on specifics, that the DEI and CRT are different things despite a shared language and plenty of evidence tying them together. These narratives are just not productive. We all want the schools to be a better place. We can teach diversity and inclusion without applying these interpretive tools. We need schools to be impartial and encourage discussions around these issues in a more nuanced way. We also need officials that are sensitive to the fact that identity politics tends, tend to promote hate, especially ideologies that caricature groups into oppressed and oppressors. With respect to the hiring process, I think it's important for the board to come up with a scorecarding process for both the hard and soft skills that can be reviewed by select parents or maybe a bipartisan committee. The scorecarding process should include scores for one, the ability to remain politically impartial, especially around topics of race, gender and identity. Two, demonstrate skills that will help our kids learn to listen to each other, for God's sakes. Three, demonstrate a clear understanding that it's incumbent upon our public officials to identify pathological, pathological extremes on the right and the left. They should also demonstrate their ability to distinguish themselves from those who go too far. Four, they should demonstrate situational humility when applying these experience to our community. That's always important. Pathological extremes is, are, are sometimes obvious. The right can go too far, but so can the left. We have a much harder, harder time identifying when progressives have gone too far. What is the red line for progressive, for the progressive left? In my opinion, it's a CRT, which has been transparently, transparently adopted by various school leaders. Let's find someone who is impartial, humble, and has the hard skills needed for this role. Thank you. I'm happy to lend myself to the board if they need help with the, with interviewing techniques. I do a lot of interviewing.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ben. All right, anyone else? See?
Suzanne has a comment.
And then I think I see David Bryan waving his hand as well. So we'll go to Suzanne.
Hi Suzanne Crivitt, eighty-six Black Rock, Turnpike, Reading. I wanted to echo what Phyllis Rhodes said. I have the same concern about all the people that have, the administrators that have been, that have left. And I've been attending board meetings since the late nineties and I, it's been grueling pretty much that entire time for many people. I, I watch it over and over again. And I, some of them, I, I don't know how they do it, but there's been too much turnover for a long time, in my opinion. And right now it's the worst I've ever seen. So I just want to say that, that I have concern about the stamina, you know, the, the hard, difficult jobs these are for people. And, and I agree that maybe we can look into how the meetings are structured as a, as a, as sort of, in my mind, a simple thing we could look into to change, to make it easier on some of the administrators. I also want to make another comment. I, I'm very concerned about the amount of political dialogue that has entered into these board meetings. I have to be honest, I've never seen this before. I find it very disturbing. I, I don't know what we can do to stop it, but um, all these discussions really trouble me. I was very happy to live in a place that hadn't been affected by the terrible divisions in the country. And I feel like I can't say that anymore. And I, I don't really, I'm not, I don't have a solution, but I think we should try to minimize things that are dividing our towns into left and right. And, you know, we've never done that before. We never had that like this before and I, we were always divided, but it was never by liberal or conservative or Republican or Democrat. It was always by issue. You know, we had the sports people or we had the, this people, but they were not divided this way. It was, you know, our issue and but this is, we're bringing national issues into our local situation. And I think it's a mistake and it'll just lead to a, a bad atmosphere. So those were my two comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Susan. Uh, and then I saw David Bryant. David, do you still want to speak? You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Sorry, you're on mute, David. Needs to unmute.
I'm sorry, my technical skills are far diminished from all of you.
No, no worries. Can we give a name and address and then?
Two Pond Road in Easton.
Thank you.
I think Dr. Harrison was a poor choice. With hindsight, a couple of years ago, he'd be much better off in the academic atmosphere where he could profess his ideology and further it probably through journal writings, et cetera. Poor choice for a school superintendent where you have parents that really care about what's going on with learning in their schools. Item two, I think the politicization is unavoidable in this moment. And back to Harrison for a minute, I mean, that would be like Mississippi in nineteen sixty-three. This, the racial divide is so profound that I think that the board choosing Dr. Harrison was kind of stepping on a tripwire and heading for trouble with him because he was radical left.
All right, thank you. David, I think you're on the point. Do you have another point you'd like to make, please?
Yeah. Few more points. I think this statement that administrators have been worked too hard or Dr. Harrison was frankly is absurd. For forty-seven years, I directed five different public libraries and the last one I directed in California had, I had seven boards I reported to, seven. And my typical work week was fifty-five hours. When I ran the New Canaan Library here in Connecticut, I had three different boards. And each one was trying out to the other and I happen to live twenty-five miles away and I can tell you that I drove through snowstorms and everything else because that was the job. That is the job. You report to boards. Boards represent a population and they're the best thing we have is representative government to hold sway on an administrator. I wouldn't coddle the administrators. I'd tell them upfront, this is a full-time job. It includes evenings and weekends. I think that's pretty straightforward. The pay is quite good and the pension is extraordinary and so are the benefits. So I think that working long hours should be expected and is expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you. All right, who else? I see Suzanne? Suzanne's iPhone.
Hi, ready. This is Suzanne Nolan, two thirty-five Lontown Road, Reading, Connecticut. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Harrison. I think that he brought in some light during some dark times and I'm really sad to see him go. I think that he was a good choice and I'm sorry that it didn't work out. I also think that the sport, the structure that we have right now is very difficult and I think we need to look at it and figure out a way to get work. I have been in this town for twenty years. I have three kids through the system. I have seen administrators come and go.
Cause I think we're losing you. All right, I think we lost Susan. Looks like she's frozen there. Okay.
Did you catch me?
No, we didn't catch your last comment.
Oh, I'm just saying, we really need work, Alan. Did you get there? Uh-oh.
Yeah, we're having problems with your audio.
There, am I better? Am I back? No, I'm gonna work on work. I don't know if you can hear me.
No, we, we can't.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Better.
Well, Todd, work-life balance. That's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm hoping to bring to this position. All right?
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, any other members of the public like to comment? I see Dana, you're raising your hand again. So let me see if anyone else. We go back to Dana.
Yeah, I'll just be very, very brief and quick. And I do wish Dr. Harrison luck in his, his next step and his next endeavor. But at the last tri-board meeting, a comment was made by a board member that, that, you know, for, for us, the public to cut it out, to stop sending letters, to stop doing the things we're doing. And I just wanted to say from our perspective, from my perspective, I think it may not seem it, but in some sense, we are helping you do your job by making sure or trying to make sure that people understand what is going on and what the issues are and bringing their voice to you. And I know that may not always be pleasant and it may seem like we're getting in the way. But I think it's part of the burden of being a public official. Thank you for your service and thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you. All right, any other members of the public? I don't want to go around to everybody again, so I don't see any other hands up. So I'll go to board member comment. Any members of the board like to comment? Maureen?
I just want to reiterate a refrain that I've taken up a number of times, which is that the members of these boards work well together. That despite all the adversity we face, we do not treat one another nor act in any partisan manner. And while we may be direct elected under a political party name, we forget about that when we do this work. We work for the kids. So to the degree that there is some infection of political discourse here, it's not in the board. It may be in the members of the public who come to present their, their issues before us and they do that with a particular slant. But I do not see it and have never seen it among the members of the public.
Thank you, Maureen. Any other board members? Cheryl and then Karen, I'll come to you next. So go ahead, Cheryl.
I, first of all, I agree a hundred percent with everything Maureen just said. And I, I think I did want to address a couple of comments and, and just overall, and I would, first I would encourage for those who were not able to attend the tri-board meeting earlier this week, the special tribal meeting, there was a recording available and there were public comment or board member comments that were made across all three boards with respect to the governance structure. So I encourage everybody to read those or to listen to that. If you have the time, it's not that long. It is not a long meeting. And I guess with respect to search funds, to clarify from a taxpayer this clarifying, I'm answering a question from the public just to clarify so that there is no misunderstanding and there's no misinformation. So with respect to the funds, with respect to the superintendent search, yes, that, that is not, there's no additional funds. The funds we're referring to were for the head of school. And again, as, as list, as per the discussion, that will be determined at a future date. So that, just to clarify that from a financial perspective. I think with respect to governance, that's, that's a hard one. And I, I do acknowledge the comments particularly from those who came from, had sent kids to our school system and have been in town for, God bless you all, longer than I have and have the benefit of seeing multiple generations go through the school. And it's, while it's disheartening to hear the tri-board structure has been problematic since the, since inception, it's also good to hear that over time, although it's unwieldy, the structure is, intends not to insert politics into education. And to, back to Maureen's point, I believe that this tri-board, however unwieldy it may be, that we try to put aside partisan politics and again, are focused on the best education for our students and being able to have a safe, welcoming environment, working environment for all of our staff across all the buildings. That said, the governance is tough. And what I would ask the public members that do have a strong opinion about it, or even just to get factual, accurate knowledge as opposed to relying on information that doesn't come from ER nine is, is listen to those meetings. come from ER nine, is, is, listen to those meetings. There are policy meetings as well as governance discussions that the tri-boards have been trying to make the process a little bit easier. It's not been easy to do that, but we're confined with the legal organization of how we're, how we're organized. And if there is some strong public opinion one way or the other, as I mentioned a couple days ago, there's a tri-board meeting, then that would be up to the voters of Reading and Easton to be able to reconstitute it accordingly. But we are trying our best with respect to governance, but welcome those from members of the public to listen in those governance discussions in the context of policy. And if you have any suggestions, we're welcome to hear them, and, you know, feel free to email us. We all have public emails. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And then Karen, you had your hand up as well?
So I would just like to say to the members of the public that think that Dr. Harrison's selection was a political movement of some sort of agenda, that was not in fact the case, that we picked Dr. Harrison solely based on the fact that he was the most qualified applicant, and that is absolutely the sole reason why we picked him. The other thing that I would like to address, as Mr. Benson mentioned, was the fact that, you know, the letters are helpful, et cetera. Letters are fine, nobody minds letters. It's the constant, it's the flyers with our pictures on it, how we voted, it's the, it seems actually kind of like political bullying is how I would put it, and it's an agenda that is, seems to be infecting itself in the education of our children. And while other people are talking about CRT, et cetera, that isn't even anything that we've even discussed. What we've been talking about is, well, we talked about a survey that was for the DEI, but nowhere on that survey did it mention CRT. And for the people who keeps claiming that that's what we're doing, that is absolutely not what we're doing. And it makes me sad that with all that we've got on our plate, this keeps coming up, and there are so many other things that we really need to focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members comment? Mike?
Yeah, thanks. So I just want to echo what, what a lot of my fellow board members have said, especially Maureen, about the fact that we do work in a nonpartisan way to serve the best interest of our students and our community, and I think that is the commitment of the boards and always has been. And I also want to address, again, I have been here 32 years in Reading and been to board meetings for more years than I'm willing to share, and I've seen how the structure impacts the, the demands of, of the administrators, and I absolutely acknowledge that. And that is something that is an ongoing issue that the boards should be, should be working on, and, and we do work on, on that, and we do, and, and again, just so that everyone is clear, the average tenure of a DURG A superintendent is four years. It's four years, okay? And when you go back and you look at the ER nine's history, Dr. Fosbender was here for seven or eight years, and then we had a few, you know, of superintendents we brought in that were close to retirement. They were here for a year or two, and that, it was kind of in, in the, you know, in transition as we, then when we hired Dr. McMoran, again, he was here five years, right? So the, we're not going through superintendents at light speed that's that drastically different than other DURG A school districts. I do believe that, you know, I was, I was very hopeful that Dr. Harrison was going to be here for a long time, and I remain a staunch supporter of Dr. Harrison's, and I agree with Karen that he was hired based on his qualifications. He was, he was not brought in here for any specific social agenda or any curriculum agenda. He was brought in because of, of his vast qualifications. I, I do feel that, you know, we always have to look at trying to prevent meetings from going to 11 o'clock. I, I do feel that sometimes when we joke about it, we're joking about it, much like people who are on the job working late, you know, there's, there's not much you can do about it. When we have issues in an anomaly year that have generated a great deal of public debate, I think we have to hear from everyone. And when we hear from everyone, and it takes two and a half to three hours, our meetings go to 11 o'clock. And it's, it's unfortunate, but it's, it's kind of the business we have chosen. That, that's, we, we welcome public input. We, you know, I can do without the divisive rhetoric, but I certainly am, am happy to receive emails and input from everyone, all, all my constituents. I think that's very important. But I guess what I'm saying is that we've looked at structure many times, and we have to continue to look at that, but we, we shouldn't try to fall into the trap that we are, our structure is detrimental to having a, a long tenure of administrators. I think that we've had it in the past, it can happen again. I, I do think we have work, ongoing work, that it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a constant battle for us, but I do feel like this was an anomaly year. There, there were so many things going on this year with, you know, that we had more meetings this year, I think, than we probably had over the last two years. It, it's just been one of those years, and it's, it's tough, but, you know, I, I just think sometimes we're put in that situation and we don't have a choice, but I do appreciate the comments of, of everybody, especially my, my fellow board members, and I support that.
All right, Mary Lee?
So I, I have, I guess, two basic points, and they're interrelated. I was a US history teacher, eighth grade. I loved teaching US history, okay? It is, we have a complex history in this country. I'm not saying anything new, and I know that. I think that the difficulty is, we try to acknowledge all that we've gone through, and our history in the United States is not perfect. And I would present my students with the information, and I would ask them to come up with their conclusion based on the facts. They may disagree with me, that's fine. If they come up and they, they present, you know, viable arguments, that's fine. I would defend to my death that I think this country is the best. So, but we have to acknowledge that there were problems, and if we don't, we're not telling a true history. That's not CRT, that's not anything new, that is just the history of the United States. And the work that the DEI Task Force, in my opinion, was putting forth was simply to help our students succeed in school. We have all kinds of students with all kinds of things going on, okay? Disabilities, differences in backgrounds, whatever. You can't learn anything if you are so unedged that you can't take it in. And in my opinion, and it may be wrong, but that's what the DI Task Force was trying to help figure out, what circumstances are our students facing, and how can we help them learn better? And that's it. That's it.
Thank you. All right, any other board members? It's a comment. All right, seeing none, and in the spirit of keeping this meeting as short as possible, I second everything the board member said, and move us on to item five, adjournment. Do I get a motion for adjournment from one of the board members? Maureen, and I have a second, please. Karen? Thank you. All right, seeing no objection, then we will adjourn at 8:05 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.